Come on this week. Wait here, see you in here for a minute and she can get the old call.
I don't think I've.
This one right here?
Thinking what what do you supposed to be writing about this writing after? I haven't.
They ever have? Yep. Well, let's remember you're ready to go.
Uh Harper absence. McGreen here. Baxter.
Here.
Mackey.
Erica.
Acid.
Yeah.
She hasn't popped on yet?
Yeah. All right, moving on to public comments. Are there any public comments? Okay, hearing no public comments. Presentation by Tim Miller.
Oh, that's that's reminding him of.
You were.
Uh, I forgot to make mistake.
But I can.
Actually come up later, you can move all this other stuff and come back.
Exactly.
I put him on for next month if this is better.
I do know that they recommended not building your own team like so.
No.
That was too small, a lot too small. Doesn't make sense. But I didn't want to avoid it.
Okay. Moving on, next presentation, Stephen Dyke, which she's not here either.
The producer was gonna be stuck with last month meeting he said in here.
Hold on. Moving on to consent agenda. Is there any discussion? So on the list of claims, we have payoffs eighteen and payoffs nineteen for King Construction.
Right.
Paying. You need to, uh.
And then what's left after all of that is?
Is the five percent.
It's a little above five percent of, yeah. For the retaining.
Right.
They were over there today.
Yeah, yeah, they've been rolling some things. So now we get them back here working. We had a meeting last week over there. Lance from King Construction reached out to the subcontractors, the electric and the HVAC. They said within three weeks after receiving payment, they could get us back into their schedule and get it finished up. After payment.
Yeah. Well, I didn't like questions than telling people a lot of screen. Uh, it was, well, that's on the plans. I'm sorry.
Right, but if you ask before.
He's gonna hold.
I just have some questions.
Okay. Is there any more of the list of claims? Anything else?
So I have one question under the US Bank. Under Supplies, number twenty-three. So what I found out today when I'm getting all the bills ready is they have this March sixth as our due date was when our payment was due, which we don't have a council meeting before then for us to be able to do that. Lori brought to me receipts that she has. This figure in here of oh, three, one, four, ten, sixty-four, ninety-nine is everything that she has purchased through Amazon so that if we approve it when I see receive the next bill, we'll be able to go ahead and pay. Because we also, I haven't received the bill yet. If you put some equipment or something on one of the credit cards.
Yes, card cards.
So that would all trigger the next one and it'll, so I tried to call the day to see if they would move our due date to later in the month. But I'm not on there for a person to authorize that. Only you and Taylor are. So one of you guys has to call in a request. My name be added to a person for information on the accounts. But I thought if we could go ahead, Lori's having putting these figures in at her meeting now at the library board. And that's everything that she has purchased up till now. So when our next bill comes in, the only thing it won't have is what Dale put on there for those pops. With a pulse?
Or a truck and a rear.
And a breaker. So that's the only thing, because that US Bank is new. So that's anything that Dale goes up and purchases now that we, if we don't have an account there, he's using the card to purchase equipment. So he doesn't have to have use his own card. Um, if I order toner and stuff for the printer, um, I can do it through Amazon. It's delivered here. I don't have to go to Staples. Now it just saves a lot of time. It's just getting that due date changed to go inside with our meeting dates and approval. Other than that, has magazines beyond there?
Are we keeping track of that in hours?
Um, yeah, that seems just gives me a sheet of the hours that that she has and then, um, her mileage. Like thirty-five miles to Detroit for her time this way.
Yep. Okay.
Other than that, that was all that I had on the list claims part of it.
Why would you want to discuss?
Can we just get the hour and the word?
Yeah, no, because you have to do that before we.
I don't know what the attorney said about selling that property. So maybe it is.
Well, no, because we need to get it resolved so that we can even get the deed and stuff that I have again.
Well, that's just we, but I think.
Which we've sent all the information to Tom. I mean, had the whole packet and it's okay.
Okay.
This is what he recommends where we needed to start and make sure we had it all done correctly.
Okay.
Because we couldn't find some of the forms that we thought were done.
Just make sure you covered everything.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, that's what Tom was on.
Okay. I'm good with it. I'm going to wait until the consent agenda.
Second, all in favor to move to to approve the consent agenda, say hi.
Hi.
All opposed in A. Eyes have it. Moving on to departments, road and water.
No, one of them good at road, not road guy yet.
Okay, that's coming up pretty soon, isn't it? When it's telling. Did we buy anything from last year? Did we pre-buy? Anything kind of?
I ordered salt next year. Cause he had a flyer, some specials that they had for Salt and Stamps and I gave it to Dale and he went ahead and ordered.
We've all received it.
Right, right.
Right, okay. I didn't, we bought any ceiling like we did last year. We bought a bunch of ceilings.
He should have shown us.
Okay.
With that.
Everything else good?
Yeah, sorry.
No, you're fine. Some Terry and Parks.
Well, Thursday, the twenty-third of February, it was pretty lightly attended. I worked through priorities. I got a much better focus on the mayor's directors with regards to fireman stays. Uh, tended to be set up with Pastor Mark, so Chief Taylor. So that's moving forward. We've got additional meetings Thursday, the twenty-third of March and our regular schedule.
What are the dates again? What are the dates?
Central countdown.
Uh, I have some booklets that a couple of people dropped off about like playground equipment and stuff like that.
Yes, I would love to see those books. Thank you.
I have them in the office. Are you in a bio?
Okay, good. Your mic good?
What was that? The invite? I'll, I'll include you in the invite.
Right, moving on to library, just in time, just just.
Well, first of all, I, uh, I got it.
Good.
Sorry. Thank you. And it's pretty similar to that here. Uh, we did get a little more money from Inrich Iowa this year. Um, and like how many funds? So that's always very helpful to our budget and the Inrich Iowa have to be used for programs. But we definitely are able to use that as a program. Um, I already have, um, everyone booked for the summer program and um, so the funds are already spent for that. There's going to be a lot of great programs coming up. Um, we would like to look at next year with Alcarro, maybe the city funds of Alcarro because they haven't raised their fund at all. That's a possibility.
How long, how long have you been with them?
Um, I don't know exactly, but I know it's been nineteen hundred for several years now. But I know it's based on population. So um, we have our state librarian coming in a couple of weeks to work on our five-year plan. And we're going to ask her to what she would probably know what are the procedures we have to go through to see if that would happen? What we need to do. Um, the other thing is, um, with our copy machine and Mike can maybe help me on this. We've had a um, here with Marco and it's not a very big company. We've been trying to get out of this contract. Supposedly now around the month to month, they told us that April that by this April, we could have a dollar buyout because they've already spent thousands of dollars on this copier. Each month the fees go up. And, um, now the latest email I, you know, the corporate saying April's coming up with one of our last buildings so that we can pay our dollar. It was supposed to be a dollar buyout. And I said, well, there's no such agreement. And there was no paperwork and we've never received any pay order. And every time we call them, there's no response. Every time they email us, no response. So we think that it's probably time maybe to talk to the, maybe to the new city attorney and see what can be done.
Good.
That's, that's not a, I mean, it's. They need to talk, we need to move this on to the city attorney. We no longer want Marco services. Um, if they want their copier back, they can come and take it. If they want to do the dollar buyout, we'll take advantage of that and keep the copier for ourselves and we'll use it until the day government dies. And we'll get rid of it ourselves. But at this point in time, you know, the library board is documented very, very thoroughly. All of their attempts to communicate with these cats. And it's, it's been pretty frustrating for them. Uh, so at this point, during today's meeting, I strongly encourage them to talk to you, Mr. Barrett, get the city attorney involved. They've already involved the state. Uh, Better Business Bureau and they're involving them as well. They're going to move forward with that sort of complaint process. But at the same time, I think the city attorney needs to be aware of this and they need to give some legal counsel to the library board.
And yes, the board is very willing and happy to be with the city or with the attorney. So see what out we need to do. So.
Okay, then we'll open them tomorrow on.
All right, thank you so much.
Moving on to finance, economic development.
Yeah. We did a five from the boost screen. I think I told that last time and we'll hear from them. Maybe it changes to get the ground. We have a steering committee of nine people. They will be with experts from the state to help us about the country and our work with Tim that we built the town and the plan and whatever.
They're going to work with Tim on that too?
Well, we'll talk to experts as best I can.
Yeah.
It's pretty, uh, it'll be interesting to see what happens. So make sure you team this on them. Tell us what you got here.
But we know I received some other funding and I wasn't sure if something that could maybe help pay for some of our top work that were needing to pack. Uh, so I was going to have you take over that to see what we could apply for and use that for.
Sure.
That you do by June fifth, but that has to be used by June thirtieth. So it's a very short time.
Okay.
So if we can get it in sooner and get it through one thing. Yeah. When you're going to clean up the bank reconciliation and that's going to be kind of spending. So I'm wondering if that technical system would help.
In that category.
All right. Moving on, communications.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
A month doesn't.
Moving on to firemen.
A, a, we're going to be doing breakfast up here, my regular breakfast, uh, before the Easter. Uh, that's seven, nine thirty.
Don't we have said anything to me about that? I don't have that in books. I better check the books to make sure. I know the seventh is the fish fry in here.
Ice bitter, ice bitter.
I'll, I'll look in the book. I know.
Well.
Yeah. When we get done, I'll go look real quick. Make sure.
And we've been working on the, uh, remodel. That's already done. Got one of the bathrooms usable, uh, and a sink. Kind of plug it away. So we gotta get trim. Trim, stay a few more doors with those on. Will be put together as far as we can as of right now, um, without putting any kind of, kind of, kind of, the cabinets, the countertops. That period is going to have to wait for a while. Gonna go through the firehouse sub grid in April. Uh, try to get some variator expectation tools. Kind of, kind of start to get through them. Uh, all, we're sitting at forty-two calls in the year so far. I.
Okay. Thanks. Moving on to discussion items. Um, this item touched on about a month ago or so with, uh, some property lines here that the city owns that Dan would like to purchase. Or, uh, expand. Have to have the process to do it.
All right, so kind of go through this. This first page, if you read that on the top where we put brackets around it, it says section twenty-one against the southwest lots twelve and thirteen accepts ten-foot strip on the south side. That description has been on there since nineteen twelve. It has not changed. So yes, that could be misleading because if you look on the next page, if you flip that over, uh, this is the purchase agreement with the railroad showing in the yellow portion in nineteen twelve, they bought ten foot off the edge of the office outside of the lot. And then in nineteen fourteen, they bought an additional fifteen. What's that? Yeah, and then this was actually, this page here was the sale between the railroad and the city. So this was the agreement, the second page, was the agreement between the, was with the railroad and the city. Uh, we'll go into just go back, go back to page six on the map. So that, that one there is one of the pictures we took. It's not the greatest, but if you flip that over to page seven, you have white and it kind of highlighted in there. So the yellow is the ten-foot portion, which is the number twenty-nine is referred to in the sale. And then also the fifteen foot is number thirty. And this is all coming from the county up there. This is copies from what's at the recorder's office. But if you look on that same page, then there is an additional uh, twenty-five feet portion in there. Right below the pink, it says telephone line in there and it was another section of twenty-five feet. But if you look at that, there is no large number like there is for twenty-nine, thirty because there's no actual evidence that that property was ever sold. So there's no deed or we've not seen any transactions on that piece of property. So what's that? So yeah, then the next one is, is the proposed.
Yeah.
That, that's the proposed sale because that goes page eight and seven kind of go together. That shows that whole section. Then you guys end up buying from the city bond from the rail. Yeah, the maps go side by side. So there's a three hundred foot section goes on the south side or on the east side of the road and some on the west side. When we go to the next here, uh, page nine is the actual deed for the transfer of the ten foot to this, to the railroad from the owner of the property at that time. And then the following page, uh, number sixty-one says that pain is the section showing the fifteen footer section that was sold to that. So if you, which we don't have the full map of it, whether if you look on that section, the lots over there are sixty-six feet wide. So it says lots twelve and thirteen. So that would be a hundred and thirty-two feet is what would been the original distance on the front. But they sold off twenty-five feet. So that puts it down to a hundred and seventeen on frontage on that without, but there's that twenty-five foot section in there. It says telephone on it was more of an easement. It wasn't actually a sale of a property from what we've gone through on the paperwork up there. So it's showing when we look back at the records on that through that with the railroad pulling out and that was reinforcements and right of ways were basically given up. And back to the, they're supposed to go back to the original land or landowner or who had owned that property after the railroad.
Good.
So. All right, so our, our issue on, we, I give you a proposed purchase on that. I'm all I need to get my garage on the property and that is hundred twenty feet. I'm trying to buy the whole hundred thirty-two feet. And I was saying thing. What's that? Right, I'm just saying the original property is one thirty-two on the front and we're just asking for one twenty on that. So we're, there's like thirteen feet difference in there because we're not sure on the twenty-five foot section in there that was a telephone easement because there's not showing any ownership on that twenty-five foot. I know the cities, there's no transfer of the property to anybody.
So is this a city mistake or is this a county mistake?
We have no idea. Yeah, we've bet the, the county has no record of it. They're, they're not sure. Part of the issue is when they consider as an easement, some of them, there's no record when then some, some of the stuff.
There's no, there's no deed transfer when it's a right of way going back to.
Right, so there's no record of it. So it's just a right of way issue where they're giving somebody the right to come in on the property to use that. There's no record of that because the land actually didn't change hands. So there was no deed needed, deed change in that.
So your neighbors that just went through this about three years ago.
Yeah.
None of that's really said in theirs.
Just. Well, when we went back and looked through theirs, they ran into an issue on that, on those sections back there on the back side. Some of that did not have a title on it or they did not have ownership. Know who actually owned it. So they had to go through a.
Quiet title.
Quiet title basically and retitle the property back to them.
Was that on the county side?
Yes.
Cause on the city side, it shows that city property. That's what it shows, that whole section there.
We know that that. It shows fifty-one feet on there on the back, back. But if you read our description of our property now the back and front of the lot of what was at eighty-seven feet by what the county says.
Okay, so what do you guys propose that you want?
Well, we, we're trying to figure out where does twenty-five feet? Cause that makes a big difference because if it actually never got transferred off or we're supposed to be the owners. I really hate to pay for twenty-five footer ground that I don't need to pay for twenty-five feet.
And the other issue is the house that they're, the, the house and the garage that are there were built in ninety-six and are not currently, the garage not currently on our property as the states of the county reports.
But if, if you had the twenty-five feet on the. But if, if you had the twenty-five feet on the, on to, on to the eight set right now, the garage. The, the line would end up two foot on the south side of the garage. They should have eight, they ought to have eight. Right, but that's why, that's why we're saying that, in my original proposal, that's why we asked for a hundred and twenty feet. Was so that we would have. The right setback on that, on the cert, according to the survey, that's why, that's why those marks were placed there. Well, whatever size a lot is, it still has to be purchased at a fair market value. It cannot be given, nothing like that, and we were talking about before is how do we come to that? So that's where I looked at what your property was, it was going to be attached to it, the assessed value of your property. Break that down in square footage, you take however many square feet you want to buy for whatever size that is. You time to buy that and that's what it is, it has to be fair market value. We're not arguing that, we're arguing the fact that, that that twenty-five foot in there, we're not sure that that actually belongs to the city. Because there's no, no deed or no warrant deed that's actually shown and that was transferred from the original property over. Over to the railroad or over to the city. Right, wouldn't they have found that when they did purgases up there because they have the county attorney in on that and everything? Yes, that's why they had to come up with and recreate, do a quiet title to basically create a title for part of that ground.
And they didn't, I don't think probably because they wouldn't trade them.
Well, the trade was purpose own. Race Street, the corner, so instead of trading money, buying it, he just traded that corner. Because it had a parcel number on it to that, that section. Right, they're, they're originally pay man offered to buy that corner, do the paperwork and pay the city five dollars and then the city came back and said, hey. How about if we just trade it and not take the five dollars?
Right.
Yeah, can't buy anything for a dollar. Right, right. We understand.
So they didn't question the, the size of that property in the map because you guys were doing straight trade, but it didn't really matter to them how many feet they were getting in the back. Because it was a straight trade, it didn't matter.
On, on the city side. City side, yeah. So when it went to the county and there wasn't, that was, there wasn't anything there, then they had to come up with an actual title for that. On the county side for that and there was no, was no title. So are you wanting to have something made up on, on the actual size you want? Well, there's, there's no way we're going to go back in a hundred years and figure out if it ever got transferred back or not, there's, that's just, that ain't gonna happen. I've already been to Story County up there, talked to Linda, Lisa about this whole ordeal, she printed me out everything. Yeah, 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 all of it, all of it from the railroad time there on it.
And she didn't have it, did she have a deed for that twenty-five feet?
No. And I didn't say, she just gave me copies of everything she had up, so that's what I had. Well, yeah. So.
We thought we owned the extra twenty-five feet, that's not needed, we actually, we own a lot more than that, but anyway. We did find out that the ten and the fifteen weren't even to the city.
Yes, that is part of the, we have the paperwork.
Right, but if you figure in. That, the ten and the twenty-five already offered there with the new survey of your ten foot shy of where we need to meet them.
So we, so basically we need to buy, we need to buy additional ten feet by hundred and thirty-two south side. So instead of that twenty-five foot that's missing in here, that there's no title for, we can. Yeah, yeah, we, so you take eighty-seven and twenty-five, that puts us at a hundred and twelve. But if you buy that entire lot, the rest of it, it puts you well within your garage parameters where you need to be, that's.
The ten foot?
When I see your, your survey you had done. Right, right, what I'm saying is if you add the twenty-five foot back onto the eighty-seven feet frontage already. Because we're saying that, you guys are saying you own that twenty-five feet. To the south?
Yeah, to a total of fifty-one.
So you're saying you own fifty-one feet of our property there and we're saying that that twenty-five foot in there that you guys are saying that's yours. There was, that was never, that was never sold and there was no record of any transaction on it, that was just easy. And when the railroad went out, that should have went back to the property that, that came here. Well, city owned that before railroad came in. So I suppose it went back to the city. No, no, it went to whoever owned lot thirteen, so it was supposed to do. Thirteen and eleven, so it should have went back to, because the same guy had forced a known and all that through there, all those lots at the time. One guy had all that. So eighty-seven and twenty-five, which you have one twelve. I need a hundred and twenty foot to make sure that my setbacks are correct. I don't have your. You have a copy of your survey still? I had a copy of the survey. So you want to buy that whole lot plus more land? You want to buy that whole lot plus? You just want to buy a section, section. Yeah, so, so this is showing at eighty-seven feet. So at the front here, it says that it's another twenty-eight feet to the corner. Well, no, these are, these are lots right here, right here, so there. No, this is, if you look here, I only, that is only, that pin is set at a hundred and twenty point four one feet, I did not need a hundred and thirty-two feet to be compliant on the garage. And that's what the survey was. You don't want to buy all of this down here, you don't want. No, where this dark line is, is what I want to buy too. Yeah. So there's, there's an additional twelve foot that I could purchase that would be, would make that sixty-six feet. So you want to buy that additional two? No. No, all I'm asking for is by a ten foot strip on. Yeah. It would be, it would be ten foot south of the garage, straight across, go right into that, go right, go right into this corner right here.
Okay.
Because that pin is the one on that survey that I gave you, this one here, that's where that began. And it looks funny because it's a fact. No. So this comes over, this is straight over, so that, that pin is ten foot south. Yeah, so this is from this corner here to this corner to a hundred and five foot, just like. Right, so, but what I'm also saying there is that there are twenty-five foot in here. That we're putting in that corner of my garage. That is a question on who's the actual, so city state can claim to it, but there's no. No reference anywhere that that land was ever purchased from the previous land. All I want to do is just swear. Square it on. It's a hundred and thirty-two feet. So, so the, the, as a square here, so right here is the way. You want to come straight on across. No, no, that's all, that is with the line already, these lots all sit in there and, and they're not straight with that property. So when Purvis bought his ground, he went off of this pin right here and went straight over. To get. Runs across this. That was in there. Was that red one, go right back? Yeah, right, straight across, yeah. Uh, whatever. Sixty-six, so I'd be what, fifty-four feet wide from, okay, so as we figure out a total square footage, but you're still going to question the twenty-five feet. I'm still going to question the twenty-five feet, yes. Well, I guess you'll have to dig for proof for that, I guess on that, I don't know what else to tell you. We're going to talk about like how you want to go about selling it, like the square footage. That's, that's. Let's sell it by the square foot.
You don't know what. What were you guys, what was the board?
So this has been like this for a hundred plus years. We're not going to go about and change it all of a sudden now, I mean, there's been many other people that's owned that property since then, I would say. It's a word I want to say, it's been too long.
Oh, statute of limitations.
There you go. So that might be what it falls back to, the statute of limitations. Right.
On that twenty-five foot.
Right, yeah, because basically what. Well, basically because what, what you're saying is yes and no, but in ninety-six, when. The guy built the household or they put the house in and built the garage, yeah, that's where the garage, garage has been there since ninety-six.
He was given permission to do that and it had been there, so plenty of states.
That was also on his part to know where his lot lines are at. Same as when you bought your place, was to have a survey before you purchased it, so you knew what you were buying. Right, I mean, that's, that's on you, not us. Or not. No, no, I, I'm not saying. And I, like I said, I already had, had that survey, then that, that is the survey that we need. And I need a hundred and thirty-two feet to get to your garage where it needs to be, I don't need no one more of that back over there. Good. What's that? So basically what I'm asking is that it, we're, we'd like to buy a strip ten feet. By a hundred and thirty-two, which would be that south, and we're saying that, that twenty-five foot in there is in limbo. We'll do some more research on that, we'll do some digging on that. And we'll let you know. Next month or next meeting, try to get some more information on that twenty-five feet, but as, as of right now, we have not been able to find anywhere where that's been. That was deeded over there. Right. And there's no record of an easement for that either.
So the ten feet over to the second new bay, the clearance or? Yeah, you have the garage.
Yeah.
If the twenty-five is. After that.
So you have to remember where that red line is there, that's eighty-seven feet.
Okay.
So then you add the twenty-five on to that and that puts us at one twelve. And then I need an additional. It, it's eight feet or ten feet to get us into compliance. We're going to follow, follow up with Tom on what statute of limitations is on that, if it's been like that for so long, see what he's got to say on it, I know he's given us some other properties and maybe he can shed some light on that. And you're going to look into it more? Yes. Okay, but as for buying it by the square footage based off of your assessed value of your property. Coming down to how much square footage you want. Are we okay on the purchasing price of that?
We didn't settle on that, did we?
You don't know how much you want to buy yet, we don't know what the, what the total square footage is going to be, but I'm talking about the process to purchase it. Because I think you said something about, last time I wasn't sure how you were calculating on the square footage. Your, your total square footage, what you own right now? To your, to your assessed value you have right now, you divide those, you get a number. You're going to take that number times by the total square footage you want to purchase.
Is that how? That helps me guys have that.
Well, either that or we have it crazy, you buy it at market value. Which is state code, how you're supposed to do it. But if you want to think about it, talk about that next year or something, and they don't even have to be, you know, in a meeting, as you get information, you can bring it in and we can talk to Tom about it. Yeah, because we're trying to chase down that twenty-five feet because we have. It was an easement, and when the railroad went out, the easements were supposed to all go back to the landowners or the property owners that, that property came from. Even if it changed hands, the new owner was supposed to get that property. Well, maybe the old owner gave it to him, I don't know, living around then. Okay, you good on that? We're going to keep moving. Thanks. I get your paper here too, certainly get that back here. Uh, city code update? Okay. What were we doing about going through that, were we going to section off some of this book and let people work on that?
We need the official code book before we do anything, so we need to figure out where it's at and I need to do a digital file and put it on the website, because we don't have enough data. We need updated code book. From two thousand and fourteen. Need that and then there's organs that, that need to be put into that, that we've passed that aren't in there, so we need the updated code book. And what do we, what's the process to do that?
Probably need to call to Clear Lake. Then I'll be in the, where the codification place, there's a codification place in Clear Lake, need to call them. Good on that, any more discussion for city code? American Legion Fish Fry?
So Scott DeYoung came in to ask for Friday, April seventh for their fish fry. And wanted to know if they would be required to pay a fee because they haven't given them that.
Which now we're being transparent with everybody and supply fee across the ground.
That told him I, that would have to be something that went through council.
One of the things when they gave us the opera house. They store their, they store other materials here, so it's almost like this is part of their, whatever, their headquarters or the meeting place. So I don't know if that's what's part of, do you remember if that was part of an agreement with them?
I don't think they're, they're, they're.
Let's remember. They, they said they make this kind of their central location for American Legion, so I don't know if that means they can be here. I don't know.
Well, you can't, you can't meet in city hall unannounced.
No.
And after hours, that is a hundred percent illegal.
Yeah.
You can, you can meet out here, but you can't meet.
Right, right, but I didn't know if they expected things like they could use this, but they're, they said this part, I mean, they don't have that building.
We have a building on the end.
I don't, I don't think there is a formal agreement and I think. That you just operate as though there is one and if.
Okay.
We're going to move forward, like the good old boy need to, yeah, there, no, we've already made it abundantly clear because I advocate things that throw away away and. I don't necessarily know that I was. Right in doing so, I mean, if we want to give them a discount, great, I'd ser, always support giving a veterans organization some sort of discount to use the space. But as far as there being some sort of unwritten magical.
Right.
Agreement that, that cookie won't roll. So there needs to be, there needs to be some kind of an agreement and, I mean.
So if you're going to do this discount, where are you getting this number from and why? And then how are you going to pass it to everybody else?
Okay, no discount and no agreement, so I say discharge of full price. We're charging everybody full price, because this is a pretty, this facility is great for the price, it's a discounted price already.
So are you going to follow, follow this down?
That certainly does make it much easier.
It does, let's just go with one price.
So does that fall or are you part of the?
They're part of the city. You're part of the city, American Legion is a part of the city.
Do you want to pay?
Do you want to?
All right. Any further discussion on American Legion Fish Fry? Moving on to budget work session, to set a date for the public hearing for the FY twenty-four budget, FY twenty-three amended budget.
So Maxine and I, uh, we were here on Sunday, and in order for us to get it published and everything in time. Um, we would ask that we set the date for our next April tenth. Meeting. So that I can publish it, and that will be for the public hearing, and also to amend the budget. That will, I will have both of those published. So that we can have any work sessions in between then to have everything ready, and then it could be finalized. If April tenth works at our regular meeting.
So back with planning. Ten Aprils are drop dead date. You want to figure something between now and ten April to get the work session.
Yeah, we'll probably need another work session, but then to have the actual public hearing for the set FY twenty-four budget. And we have to amend last year's budget also.
So are you talking about two work sessions?
I don't know.
Formality, because we spent more on the Amber House, we just need to amend the budget, because publicly start more current year.
There's a few other line items that we are over on that we need to amend.
We can do that during our, our next regular session.
Yeah.
You can't really change what you set that budget rate at right now, because you always submit that maximum rate. So basically, when you're having budget session, you're just moving your line as far as how you want to now.
It's certainly set, so it's just moving your dollars around.
So when you want to do it?
I'm going to do the work session.
Be available exactly, because Susan ran off all the sheets for you tonight.
Yeah, we thought once we got done with this, we could hammer out some of the line items that we have in your packet tonight.
Okay.
And then we might need one more.
Right, and but there's really, the line and budget is internal. We've got the overall, this can be done in the next couple months, how you want to move money around.
So when do you want to have the work session?
Tonight.
We're going to start. We're planning on hitting tonight a little bit on, that's why we gave the packets out.
And then you guys can look at it and set a meeting between now and completion time, right?
Yep, before April tenth and the, do some finalizing. So I don't know if you guys want to do, I'm. Right, the thirteenth now, so you got the twentieth? Twenty-seventh or third?
What, twenty-seven?
Twenty-seventh, give them a break for some time.
Yeah.
And then we have two weeks before. And we don't have to do it on Mondays, you can do it. No, twenty-seven?
Is it Tuesday or something?
That's next Monday. I mean, it doesn't have to be on a Monday either, the night of the week. So, I mean, we could look at the twenty-eighth instead of the twenty-seventh. Twenty-eight?
Sounds good, sure.
That works a lot, a lot better than Monday.
We're covered on that. Are there any?
Are we going to start that one a little bit earlier?
You know, I don't know.
Can we start at six thirty?
Absolutely.
Start at six.
And then Riley, uh, we, it doesn't matter to me, we can start sooner. But the actual one for public hearing will be a regular seven o'clock.
I don't know if I'm. Okay to speak for everybody else, I'm just going to speak for myself. I'm really appreciative of the extra work you two have put in on this. It needed it desperately.
Was explained to you.
Never.
All right, is there any, uh, any comments from council or anybody?
Hey, can I go back to that American Legion Fish Fry thing?
Sure.
I, what, what's the date on that? Seven? That's a Friday?
Friday, Friday night.
Would be nice if all of us went for that.
Yep. Sure. And I would say, I forgot, sorry Joe, we don't have a police on here. We should go police.
Yeah, I'm just going to bring that up later.
There's something, anything, anything you want to tell us?
We had excitement.
Uh, remains, we hired a new officer. Thanks to Barb and participating in the interview family. We appreciate that. It's good to have different opinions. Um, you know, everything's going good. Do you guys have any concerns or need for anything?
Uh, the nice lady at four twenty Park Street wanted to ask about incessant barking dogs and how we mitigate that in a neighborhood setting. Two households.
In the code.
It, it won't be as big initially until we start rolling windows down, and it gets warm out, but we moved two households in our neighborhood that just, their dogs. And then speeding on Park Street in the afternoon.
It's speeding on Ridge Street.
Yeah.
All of them. I mean, I know, I, I did see you down there the other day, the other morning. Down there, somebody was.
Yeah.
At corner of Race and, and Center, right in that. That was you? Yeah, no, that's, that's a nice place.
Ninety percent of our vehicles that are going out of town.
Yeah.
Once they turn on to Park Street, they're putting the pedal to the.
Do we have a stop sign towards that end that still shows it's twenty-five or?
It's marked.
It is it?
It is marked twenty-five. It is residential. Most people know the president, resident, what is twenty-five.
And it, it became glaringly important to me to say something about that when I looked at the actual map that the bus transportation director had for the school district. And I thought, how many households? On the northwest corner of town have a school each other. And there's a bucket of kids who live in my neighborhood. I don't know where they are. I won't ever see them. Yeah, there's, there's. All right.
So we, I have been sitting on Park. There isn't really a good place to sit there, a lot, and it's just.
They're more than open to sit on my street. I mean, I'm fit there. Because that's actually good street. John and Cam's driveway is, it's.
No longer conceived.
Back up. Back up.
I need to get parallel road to Rachel.
Just your presence. Yep, yep, well, just, just having your presence in town.
Yeah. I'd like to be guys at troll. In the mornings. Afternoons. Evening time. What seems to be or sorts of.
So I did have one comment. I had a request to have a YSS show up and have a public forum. What, what concerns about? So people could ask him what's going on. Ask Andrew.
You can have it out there. They already did, really.
Well, this is the friend of Andrew's. You don't think that'd be a good idea?
I mean, it's not city limits.
I don't know. It's not city limits.
It, it, it's not in the city. If people have concerns, they're more than welcome to bring them up with this reality. I, I just sometimes feel as though those attempts. I'm certain people's parts aren't intended on their part to make themselves feel good and not getting in way.
I don't think that was. It wasn't from Andrew, it was someone else.
I don't, you know what? Why doesn't he show up here and ask? Why, why doesn't Andrew Allen come in and ask us?
Cause he's got what he wants.
Well, there you go.
He doesn't care.
Who, who would show up here and answer questions?
Andrew.
So you're saying somebody that lives in town who has some questions? And would like us to ask Andrew to come to a meeting so that?
Not to a sitting, just to open this up for a public forum. Have Andrew call the panel, so that people can come in and ask. So what are you doing? Or I'm going to say that's.
Just for our town here, right?
Questions, we put, ask Andrew to answer. What are you doing?
Would hopefully open up there. For the same thing.
I saw.
You think so?
Just, it's not a meeting, not a city meeting.
They have a building out there that they built. They want to have a Q and A, they can have it out there.
Residents in town here that have concerns on how it will impact our town.
You have Joe.
I hope, I hope it impacts our community in a major, major way. Positively, economically.
Yeah, so this.
Okay. I have someone asked.
We're already into the. I'd ask Sue to focus on the agenda for this week, and Barb made a comment about it not being something that we get into. The transportation director did ask that we do put it on our agenda, just for the sake of clarity and transparency. It was something that we talked about in councils before, and I think Bobby, you were pretty instrumental about this. A, a second bus stop in town. So he has been sitting down with me, been throwing around some ideas right now, tentatively. He would like to establish a second bus stop, so we have a north stop and a south stop. The north stop would serve everybody who lives on Ford Street and north. The south stop would be everyone who lives south of Ford. The south stop would remain the same. The north stop would be, uh. At the county garage and the church. The bus would pull in there, load up the kids. The only concern I have of that is that there is equipment there, there is, and bus stops are not supervised. And so. That's why he wanted to throw it out there and give you guys an opportunity to marinate. So there you go.
Okay.
Marinate. We're going to talk about it later.
Okay.
Is that what you wanted?
We're going to adjourn this meeting, and then we'll start another one.
Yeah, that's all I wanted to sort out there. Second.
All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I have it, meaning to adjourn.